All right, we're a little bit after seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. Are there any modifications to the agenda? And, uh... I have some bids here, and I'll go ahead and talk about that during Mayor's comments. Yeah, this is a different bill, so... All right, no modifications, I'll go ahead and start with Mayor comments. We're moving right along on the, uh, the building at the soccer fields. We've got some bids right here for getting the stonework done. Mr. Piper, we're very hard to get those. Do you have...what's the lowest bid, sir?
Look, I think one, I think that mayor, that's like three one hundred.
Okay, I'll go ahead and...
Andy, there's a catch to that now.
Okay.
But I didn't know, Debbie told me that, uh, talking about the building there. So, yeah, I did what called the boys back.
Hello?
I didn't explain to them, I didn't tell them that many of them are not very employed, and apologize to them for causing the trouble to them, but they won't do that.
Okay, well, we've got three bids, one for thirty-six hundred, one for thirty-four eighty, and one for thirty-one sixty-eight. We'll pass these down to you. Looking over our statutes, if it's between three hundred and four thousand dollars, we have to solicit three bids by either mail or telephone from three prospective vendors, for which the lowest bid with proper qualification shall be accepted. Record of the quotation shall be maintained. The purchase shall be approved by the mayor, provided it is within the vegetarian limits of the department seeking to make the purchase. So, these are under four thousand dollars. I can approve the lowest when we don't necessarily need to have board approval. If it's between four and six thousand, then we do the same thing, except the board approves it. If it's over six thousand, then you need to, uh, you need to put it in paper. Is that correct, Debbie?
Yeah, but this is considered a construction project, and that's where you need to talk to your attorney, but...
And this is suddenly prevailing, the wage, these people need to pay paperwork. What duty does the city have to police the prospective vendors, to make sure they're paying their people?
We have a requirement that we send a notification to Division of Labor and State that the contractor intends to pay prevailing wage. We have a duty to get paperwork from the contractor showing that they've paid prevailing wage. And that's just a summary.
And we have to include it in the contract, there are provisions that have to be included in the contract with the contract.
Okay, so it's one of those unfunded mandate things, where the government passes a law, then puts the burden on us?
Yes, exactly.
Well, I guess we start...
If that's the case, I mean, if it's gotta be prevailing wage, and I need to get ahold of them boys, and this one too, tell them I didn't realize that, and just apologize to them for causing the trouble to them, and they didn't pay fifteen an hour, and I got to pay forty-two on all this deal. And that, for the fact of the matter, and they won't even give that, come here for three or four days, because that just was the contractor's trouble.
Yeah.
You know, so, I didn't know it, should've known it was, but I didn't...
Mr. Chief, can you lay a block? You want to learn?
Build wood balls.
Okay.
Outside, name inside.
I suppose we could frame it in, we'd probably want to bring that foundation up a bit though, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll, uh, we'll go back to square one. Let me give these back to Mr. Piper. Okay, I don't have anything else, other than Mayor's comments, other than say the Littleton Street project is starting to get in full swing. We do have some bids to review today in regard to that, and we'll get that, uh, look at that here shortly. Oh, I do have a bid here for materials for Paas Stettler to put new metal on the airport building roof. The material's twenty-nine thirty-four oh four, and I'm gonna submit, since there's no labor with just the materials here, I'm gonna submit to find two other bids. Actually, Mr. Piper, would you be able to do that for me?
No. Your name's Special Luke?
Yeah, just call people, and say you got some metal for a roof.
You're gonna pick up material?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, definitely will, I'm on the ground for both of them.
Okay, these are the specs, here, see what that's gonna cost, it's from, say, meats or, uh...
Or just helping out the material.
Just material, and that's what we're looking at ordering. Uh, I'll approve the lowest one, we'll get that ordered, and we'll plan on putting a roof on it. It turns out it's going to be more cost-effective to replace the metal on the roof, since it's all rusted, deteriorated, and not worth a darn. We'd have to really work it, sand it, prime it, treat it with chemicals and everything else, and then paint it, and bottom line is, just as cheap to go and replace the metal and be more cost-effective than the roof.
I talked to Doc Hawkins, he said he thought he could get it painted for a thousand dollars.
Really? Okay, we need to solicit bids for that as well. I understand he's not willing to donate some paint, that's high-dollar quality stuff.
Also, he said he'd like to get it done before the fair now, during the, the tower moved, and everything, and everything.
I think, I think that's, that's a good goal, and let's start considering bids to paint that tower as well, and I talked to Mr. Chief about pouring a pad for it to move it, and then Dr. Rogers as well, and we'll see about getting that, uh, done. All right, any other comments from me? No. Uh, any citizen comments this evening?
While you're on the subject of the airport, I noticed that the rotating beacon does not operate.
Is it not working again?
It's working.
It is? We had it work last night.
When? It wasn't this morning. It wasn't this morning.
It's been working.
It's been working, because we see them night, because we get by across the street.
Yeah, I can see it from a kitchen window, and it's not working most nights.
Somebody must've turned it off.
Somebody must've turned it off, they were...
Because this morning it was not moving at all.
There was one last night, it was...
A couple of them every night, see that thing? I'll check it again, I'll check again.
Okay.
It goes off real early, the sun comes up.
Oh, is it on a solar switch?
Yeah.
Photocell?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It goes on a solar switch, it goes off early.
Okay.
I'll check it tonight.
Okay.
Any other citizen comments? I see none.
I need to ask the two citizens. You bet your two boys hard yet?
Uh, yes, they start Saturday. They start Saturday.
They start Saturday. The threes, we had seventeen hundred worth overtime last month, and shorthanded. So, listen, put how many?
Pardon?
This'll get you four, should be seven.
Yeah, we just gotta go to the training session with them, it should be maybe two or three weeks.
But you'll have seven?
Uh, six, myself, seven, count me out.
Can we...I hope Sam, looking at it, it tears some fires, and I've done a little bit more patrolling at night.
Yes.
Off the strong, there's that many houses in town.
Sure is.
And I know you're shorthanded.
Yes.
Put them out there, and stop...
Yeah, I was talking to the fire chief, what's going on with Kenza?
Give him a shift. That's not a problem. Give him a car and give him a shift.
Any other questions regarding our minutes ago?
I might have a second to read.
Is there a second? Uh, we'll take a random roll.
Jess?
Hi.
Christie?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Jim?
Larry?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
All right, Department head reports. Let's open our administration.
I don't have any questions, it's been really busy and crazy lately, but I see an end in sight, so, other than when I started counting the tax bills, and there was sixty-three people that needed certified letters sent, so... But I actually started the nuisance enforcement lady, since I'm gonna be gone the rest of the week, we worked on nuisances for a little bit today, trying to orient her, and then I started her typing legal descriptions, which I can say now, so...
So, you're gonna be on vacation?
I'm gonna be on vacation, it was the week.
Are you likely to come back?
Probably.
Okay.
My husband will force me.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Folsom? Animal control. Martin is not here this evening. She did submit a report, is that correct?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions regarding that report? I see no questions. Our fire department, or, I'm sorry, building inspector, I'll start with Dave. Yes, sir?
I really don't have that much to add to that report, but last month was, the building from this was down quite badly, and that's why we got all my years doing the report. And I have no reason, I don't understand, so far this month we've already heard, I've got three new ones. And I think that's, uh, the, 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 any questions?
Any questions for our building inspector? I see none. Our fire department, Chief Higgins.
Well, I'd like to thank Dave for helping me lay high up the station, we were doing that, and Roger's not here, picks up the bids out, that Washington Square, the event last Friday, and wants to think any of that. Looking more off my report, sit in my car, not running anymore, so...
We talked about that, you're still looking at what's available out there for the city?
Yeah, I'm in the state surplus, only got a few vehicles up there that are, give me more to get, and so...
And I'll tell you, and also I'll tell our, oh wait, some of our aldermen have complained about the, uh, the condition of our vehicles that are running around representing the city. Aside from most of them being old, with a lot of miles, and, and just not in proper operating order, uh, they're just plain ugly. We have a series of blue Dodge trucks that are all shifted and faded, and just looking horrendous. Some of our aldermen have mentioned to me, Andrew, you're working to clean up the city, why don't we clean up our vehicles, and at least put out of a professional image? And I agree, we took some bids to paint some vehicles, and, uh, here and there, and they were a little bit high, so we're still looking at how we wanna go and approach that, and how we, we want to, to at least make ourselves look a little more professional. Chief Higgins is having, uh, is that car simply not operable as of right now?
Not unless we take it down there and make, try to tear it into transmission, since they're getting charges to do that, it's slipping and going, so, along with the various other things that is wrong with it.
How many miles does that?
Either one hundred and forty-six or one hundred and sixty-four.
We need to, as a board, talk about what we wanna do as far as whether or not we wanna try to rebuild that thing, or look at alternatives. We, we tell the board what else is wrong with that vehicle, we had a whole list of things.
There was the transmission slipping, they had to go in there with the battery, charged me thirty-five dollars to tell me that the air conditioning was bad in it, the catalytic converter was pulling out of it, and whatever else that check engine might be. But the training was the main thing. Trying to go to the firemaster, and last, whenever it went out, about the fastest it could go was about twenty-five, and then finally held us spoiled, to the wall, and get back there after I turned around, so...
And that's a kind of Victoria, is that correct? And you'd probably be better suited in an SUV if it's feasible for gear, et cetera, et cetera. Just wanna make the, the board of aldermen aware that, you know, we're looking at alternatives, seeing what's out there. I would guess if we can come up with phenomenally good value from an alternative source, the board may consider that, but, uh, continuing the look. Does the board have any input in regard to that?
About the blue police car?
Uh, we're probably at the point we need to auction it off.
I hope we're to do it this morning. I hope we do a blue car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got a list of state surplus cars.
What's the expression on that, plugging one hole with another? What, what, you wanna tell us what you found?
Well, the only one I found was that, like that Wrangler that I was telling you about, I've got a top down on that, that it's ten-nine, though, it's only got sixty-six thousand miles on it, but everything else, it's twenty thousand and twelve thousand, besides the cargo van.
How many miles you put on a vehicle a year?
Wow, I don't know, I have to, have to look at that, probably eight thousand maybe, I should get probably...
What year is that SUV?
Two thousand and six.
How many miles?
Sixty-six thousand.
Throughhead.
Uh, it's a governor's vehicle or something like that, or state.
How much, ten-nine?
Ten-nine, they were eleven, eleven-nine, or whatever.
You have to have a vehicle, Joe.
Sorry, I'm gonna ask a question, because, what did you ask, or what did you find out with this one, or was that earlier this month, or did you just follow it?
I was, uh, I was late to go.
I'm just told that usually if you wait to the very end of the month, far less people that got to turn it over, you have to push things through, so they go to that one, they might come out a little bit more.
Oh, it's, it's state, state surplus, so, yeah, they, they do all the GSA options.
Okay, I understand.
What color is it?
Here it is.
Might be a red vehicle, struck the nice paint job, I mean, with a pessy piece of equipment for it.
Two thousand and six.
That's pretty many miles for it. What's your budget look at?
Sixty-eight percent?
Sixty-five, six.
Is your buddy, Mar, the fire, the head of Mrs. Firetruck, or...
It's gonna make you money off the end of the rest of the year.
How much is in the mayor's slush fund that could be allocated?
What's that? Jim? What do you think? You've been a fireman for a while.
I was, I was fire chief for seven years. I drove my personal car all that time, and I expected to go to a forty-yard stake, and I got nothing for it, except hell part of the time.
We'll backdate the hell, how's that get anymore? What's, uh, yours will bring what, about three fifty, sandwich, crush it for that much? I doubt it does, and jumps down at forty dollars a ton. Well, it's still been three, uh, forty dollars, uh, three, forty dollars a ton.
It's one ninety, it's one ninety a ton, I think.
And it still brings over three hundred dollars. In my opinion, he needs a car.
I found one, a trouble.
And you look around the world, you try to find it.
State surplus, no, I'm looking.
Can you use a pound, Victoria? Card? Well, if we're gonna buy, if we're gonna buy an area, it's either being in an SUV or getting a pickup. If we're gonna buy something, we handed down vehicles from police department, other departments, and kind of in handy, put in a fifty-foot roller hole for backseat of a car, especially when they're wet, and trying to move equipment. If the price is too high, then, uh, is that a Dodge, too? What about that franchise? Do you wanna, do you wanna, since that's, we need to do something, we don't need to just be putting off, let's advertise and take bids, and offer them to your experts, and get them to rent a car.
I'd give it that idea.
You know, put, put specs out, and I'm gonna buy a new one, that's the problem, when you, when you go to try to buy a new SUV, because, uh, what your specifications are gonna be, and how you're gonna make it, because of difference in mileage, and difference in vehicles, so, no, but he's gotta have something, you know, we depend on him for a lot of things, but...
The only thing with me on the state vehicles is you know where they've been maintained there for seventy miles.
It's kinda, I don't know. Why don't, did, did anybody, somebody look it up on Kelly Blue?
I'm working on it, but my service isn't very good here.
Look it up on Kelly Blue, let's see what it do, see what's worth, it's less than...
I'm working on it.
They were three hundred dollars for a, for a crash, now, what's, what's a, what's a crash worth?
That car will be about forty-two hundred bucks.
Can they come, can you come back to it?
Well, we can.
Well, if you, the last time we did, uh, we did a couple, we put a couple cars out for bids, they'd run about a hundred dollars apiece, and there ain't somebody a thousand dollars, and all they give is a crash.
I'll give three hundred dollars, that's the car he is, now, over there.
Well, we got, if we're gonna take bids...
I'll take three fifty.
What have you been driving, a lot of time?
You sure, you just take the Cadillac to Verdasstopp, that it calls me all your problems?
I told you, you can just drill it out, but that don't, never mind.
No, you can't, we've not done a lot of tests, but we're not gonna mileage at all. You put on vehicles.
I bet that's what it is, when it's on, drive down Cadillac Verdasstopp.
Yeah, you see the stock there, but, you know, those are cars that we run in the city, from the police department, are just not worth much. You just don't run them a block and stop them, the transmission's dark red, Cadillac Verdasstopp hole.
Oh, he's like, he's like a C.
It'd be a difference if they were, well, his vehicles, but hey, he's not in that car that much.
It's on their papers.
What's the trim package on that Wrangler? Is it SLT or... The paper reviews it.
Um, a car, a Dodge Rango, at that age, at sixty-six thousand miles, with no extra options, in fair condition, is worth ten thou, ten thousand five, but if it's in good condition, it's worth twelve thousand.
And this is a four-by-four, is that a four-by-four? You want that?
I left it up, if you wanna see it.
I, I would assume it's probably is better than fair condition.
Yeah, I just, I went with, I assumed it also has more options than the standard, but I just went with the lowest possible, so it sounds like he's got a good price to me.
And Dodgers, Victoria's for transmission program.
I haven't had from mine.
You look, sort of, around here, it's got transmission, I don't, they're bad at that.
I don't know, I've got a hundred and ninety-four on my Dodge. I ain't, I'm trying to... I vote for Brown.
I'll make a motion, we buy it.
I'll second that.
Uh, we vote by, by roll.
Wayne?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Christie?
Hi.
Jess?
Hi.
Larry?
Yo.
Top Dodge.
That motion passes. Chief Higgins, will you let me drive it? Thank you.
I told you about the special.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for our fire, but, yes, sir?
What motor is, okay, I mean, of course, no, that's, yeah. What kind, you missed, you mentioned painting the vehicle, what painting, if you wanna use it for higher profile, that we do at Disney all the time, is we wrap them, the graphics on them, it's not as expensive as painting, lasts about six years, but you can design any graphic, the message on it, especially if it's high profile, get some advertising out of it running around town.
Okay, yeah, well, this is white, now, I think it'll look sharp with a little bit of, a little bit of makeup.
Put Andy's name across the side right there.
Ooh, I like that picture, they do full color graphics.
Hey, this is, this, this is just a small SUV, don't get it here.
All right, any questions for our fire department, Mr. Kirk?
I have nothing to add off the board.
How's soccer going?
Soccer's over, girl softball, full swing, and adult softball, so...
Have you found a softball team for me to play on?
Come up on Friday night, I'm sure someone'll pick you up.
But you haven't found any team.
Sorry.
Is the pool back in full swing?
Yes.
Everything's A-one on it? That kind of school, Branson, every year they give, care people, swimming pools, whatever is care, and it, like, two weeks down, a week, two weeks pool, they, it's free, I think, when you go, I'll take care of it, can't miss.
Well, the, the Y is approached, Jess, and we had a very productive meeting, uh, that Ms. Warren and Mr. Regal attended, and, uh, we recontacted with them. I think I was waiting for them to come to us for financials, and I think they were waiting for us to provide financials, and I guess, well, that's Ms. Folsom, have, have, have we provided anything to them?
None, but...
You will be, uh, gone, Martha, would you be able to prepare some financials for the, the pool?
Debbie'll have to do it. I can stay till midnight tonight, I guess, if you want it, before I leave.
It's not a big deal, we can do it in two weeks, we can't make a decision any way for two weeks.
Yeah, fair enough.
Even want to go and offer.
I think you're gonna offer us something.
What kind of accident?
Big cross out, too. He offers, uh, the wing brings it, except the chair.
Police department, sir?
Uh, we had a hundred and seventy-eight calls for service in the month of June, thirty-six citations, three vehicle accidents, and we had seven arrests. The rest were down, which is good.
Any questions for our police department? Street and water department. Roger's gone, uh, any questions for Roger? None. I know Roger's been working very hard at, at keeping the mowers running, keeping everything up to snuff, and as always, I appreciate his efforts, and Mr. Higgins as well, I appreciate your efforts in getting, uh, square cleaned up, for relay for life, so that meant a lot to me, and a lot of people that were out there that evening, so I thank you, and Roger for that.
I got a question.
Yes?
As lately we've been living on Hickory Street down here, and y'all put up new signs, which is all right, but on each one of those, why not put the three-way stop on them, because if you're not familiar, who's got the right of way there, as far as any town you go to has got the little sign that says three-way? If that could be considered, you put on those signs.
And, and the question is, do we have those put on there? Roger's got a stack of them.
I think he ordered them.
He ordered them? Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
He didn't have it in time, but he ordered them.
Okay, well, I just seen it, and thought I'd mention it, of course.
No, it's a good, good question.
I've just noticed those, and, which the stop signs was all right, put on the street signs, or down the street.
They're on their way, and I, I could tell the public that every time I end up campaigning, going door to door, when I, when I'm in that neighborhood, I'd say about sixty percent of the people that I talk to express that as a concern, that people drive up and down Hickory Street at a hundred miles an hour, uh, it's dangerous, kids walk that street to get a new car. I've heard solutions, everything, we need to hire six full-time police officers. I've heard solutions. Everything we need to hire six full-time police officers to be at every intersection lurking in the bushes. Uh, to, we need to put speed bumps up, uh, we need stop signs. And the moment we put stop signs up, I have people coming to me complaining about the number of stop signs there. So it's one of those, uh, six and one and a half of those, the other darn if you do, darn if you don't. But I'm happy they're there. I think it promotes public safety. Yes, ma'am?
There are a lot of people that walk down to the park and back. And after dark or near dark, you can barely see people there. It's so dark on that street. I don't know if a, a light could be put up. There at, at a intersection there or what. It's really hard to see people walking.
We may have a better solution. Just west of there, along that creek side, we are talking and discussing and looking into the potentiality of an ice green space trail. It would be far removed from traffic.
That'd be good.
It would be a kind of a linear, think of a linear park. Uh, with trees and flowers and park benches, picnic areas.
Let's don't get too carried away.
People walk.
Let's don't get too carried away.
My, my dreams, which are not nightmares, they're often big. So, uh, but, but we're still in, in the developing phase. And that's going to be something that's gonna link midtown to the north part of the city. And that's something that will work hand in hand and in conjunction with what we're doing on Locust Street. There will be a time, uh, hopefully during my tenure as mayor, where you can walk from the south side of the city to the north side of the city without fear of getting run over. And I think that would be a wonderful thing for our community. Any, uh, any other questions? In that vein. We'll move on to our tax collections report. Speaking of spending money, what about taxes? How do we?
Sixteen hundred dollars collected this month. That's not very healthy, but it's pretty normal.
Any questions regarding tax collection? I see none. Waste water treatment plant. Gus, uh, is out today as well, but we have, uh, Gus's right-hand man here today. Uh, what can you tell us about the sewer treatment plant?
Uh, everything's going fairly good. It's got that input pump down.
Okay. So we do have a pump that's down. Uh, we discussed the potentiality of, uh, bringing a crane and having it crane it out. And then I came up with this, uh, genius, uh, uh, mechanical design, uh, that we could put there as a permanent fixture to efficiently pull those pumps in and out. Uh, for repair and maintenance. Mr. Chief has gone ahead and refined my genius design, uh, to do that. What, Mr. Chief, do you have any idea when we're gonna be able to get in there and get that done?
Can somebody tell us?
Okay. So hopefully soon and, uh, what, do you know what turnaround time it's gonna be to get that thing fixed?
Uh, I would say probably two weeks. It's usually about what it takes, two, two to three weeks to get.
Okay, we're gonna be.
Sometimes it just depends on how much work they got.
We're gonna be okay without it for the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
I got the rotors fixed. I got one rotor going. It was down. I got the other one. Motor burned up and burned the bearing and stuff up. Independent's coming down tomorrow. The, uh, gear reducer is hung on there. I guess it got the shaft a little hot and the heat was bearing up. And I couldn't get it off. And Independent come down to bring us a trash pump if they looked at. I asked him about it and he go, I got a gear board. Like I won't charge nothing to come down and pull it. He said it will probably have to have new bearings in it anyway.
Okay. Uh, have you taken your test for CDO?
Yeah.
And pass that?
Last Friday.
Congratulations, sir. It's nice having employees who are competent, trained and licensed and you have been an asset to, to our city. And I, I thank you. Any questions regarding our, uh, wastewater treatment plant? See none. All right, moving along. Uh, water adjustments.
Make a motion that we accept them?
All those, if they, oh, we need to do our.
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Larry?
Yeah.
Jess?
Aye.
Jim?
That motion passes. Old business. Little Street Project update. Uh, Mr. Chief, do you wanna give us a, a brief overview?
Uh, we just started setting stakes today, getting ready to start work on it.
Okay. We're, I think the gun's fully loaded except for these bids. Uh, if these bids are approved tonight, then we'll have all systems go. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. I guess the only thing missing is, is, uh, potentially doing a little bit of, uh, grinding the road down. Is that correct?
No, we're not going to grind it. I don't think.
We're not gonna mill it any? Okay. If we were to mill it, we'd need bids for that, but, but right now we're looking at not milling it.
Right.
Okay. And there are a couple easement issues, uh, very minor easement issues to take care of as well.
Mike, can we have that done by Friday?
Yeah.
All right, soccer. Soccer concession building, we spoke about that, uh, a little bit. We got the foot, the footing forward for that. Uh, it's ready for block. We just don't have bids that, that, uh, that, uh, conform with the requirements of the, uh. Waitress room. So we'll, uh, we'll revisit that and, uh, look forward to it.
Could we get Jim to, to use the builder, maybe Mike, on the feasibility of switching from block to?
That's what I said a while ago. I'm actually bringing all the interior, all the wood. If it's right next year, all the wood might get away from that deal. Anyway, that's a way of a wage deal.
I mean, it seems logical to me, but I'm not a builder.
You're right. That's what I said to Wendy and you, you guys go.
Well, do we need to, uh, take official board action on that or is that something you're, you're in charge of?
Yeah, that's something I could do. We're gonna come in under the three grand or under four grand anyway with wood, aren't we? And that's, and I think, what a trust is gonna cost for the roof? Trustes for the roof? Under four grand?
Sixty-something, sixty-seven or sixty.
Fifty-nine, sixty-nine a piece. It's sixteen there.
Okay. I guess, uh, Mike, what, is, is it your opinion we proceed with wood?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. So what do we need to do from, from here? We need to probably shore up?
Pour a little foundation. We'll probably need to pour the floor now, set the wood on the floor.
Okay.
Instead of going to foundation.
Let's, uh, go ahead and proceed with that. And, uh, and I guess as far as stud today, we're gonna need two by fours?
Uh, I might go two to twelve. Two fours would be all right.
Er.
Might as well go two to sixty. Two fours probably plenty on that, no bigger than it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll look at it, consider it and, uh. Look at, what kind of siding are we gonna wanna put on it? Like a stack over? Okay, but we want it to look good. We'll discuss it.
Before we, while we're on this. What are we gonna do about the sewer line?
I don't know. Just someone out there talked to Gus over there. Debbie, who's got, had a doctor, she's gone, just hadn't called me yet. I said, I wanted to know, but I, if we could, we'll call him. And they said, well, they haven't had no from there. Didn't have to have any engineer. You know, but later on with that dish went on. And they said, they said that he would have seventy-five dollars for me to have an engineer for that when that end year's come.
Good half.
And then they also told him that, uh, he gave him size for private rock and they told him that that would work, you know? That's why Charlie's picking. Well, about half his bid.
We had a bid, I had a bid for ten thousand dollars. If we use our own pipe and Roger holds, the only thing. Charlie's doing is, is digging the trench and we can't dig, we can't dig that trench ourselves. Because of the fact that it's too deep and OSHA will have us for lights if we dig that.
Five thousand dollars is what he bid on, on the rebid.
I mean, if we're gonna use our own pipe, we're gonna use our own man, our, and we're gonna haul gravel. The only thing Charlie's gonna do is bid it, is dig it. And it's. Why don't we get it now at the same time? I mean, we know what it's gonna cost. We'll cut it in half. We had a five thousand yard for a pipe down there. Roger thinks we may never use and if we do, we'll replace it. But it laying down there, not being used, there's no use in buying new pipe and we've got the existing five thousand out. It's the rain in there. That's all it's doing. So let's put it in the ground.
According to Gus, they told him that he was planning to use it.
It's heavier than what they're using anyhow, that pipe is. It's the same thing. It's, it's a heavier pipe than even what we normally use. So I think that we oughta go ahead and, and authorize, let's get the, let's get the water laid down where we can, let it dry and let it rip the wind.
Well, before we do that though, our statutes, uh, ordinance is to say we got some, uh, solicit three bids for that.
And then let's, let's the three bids for digging on it.
And the board will have to, to vote on it because it's over four thousand. Do you, do you have other bids?
I just put them out, let's bid it because that way we can authorize those in two weeks and we can get that done with the rest of it. Let that be a holdup on it.
Since, since it's under six thousand, we can do it, uh, without public. So if you can find bids for that, we'll, uh, we'll go forward, okay? And in two weeks we'll approve it and then we'll.
Regal's wanting it done because he hasn't got a place to buy it for the first five hours. So we gotta get that down.
Do you have a little lawn place set up for soda machines there? Maybe that's something we designed it to.
Back to your vinyl issue on your building. Think hard and long about this because vinyl will not take care of the rocks and stuff that'll be thrown and stuff like that. Uh, metal, to my opinion, would be a better choice. Or the concrete siding if you can, can afford to put it on.
Yeah, I think the concrete siding.
Concrete siding, we just put on our house and it's pretty durable stuff. But now, it will hold up five years from now, but I know it will last, it will last a lot longer than vinyl will because that vinyl down there is much. You know, it must turn around, I mean, I worked down there a long time. I know. We all know what goes on. I mean, kids are kids and some adults are adults.
Some adults don't act like that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Some adults are worse than kids are.
We had some vinyl, but good vinyl and from where we're at, the high sun on it, just it worked.
Well, say it's not, you think four, five years, it's not. And down there, there's too much, there's too much activity. It's been drove, Paul Eaton drove or something on.
The word well.
Once you got the destructive teenagers.
Tell me a teenager with it, I mean, there's some of our dads out there.
Any other questions regarding our.
It's always the other person's kids.
I see none. All right, uh, Lee, uh, slipper house benefits. Uh, he, uh, we, we hired him to work for us for a period of a year. Uh, at a, at a rate of, uh, fifteen dollars an hour to do a lot of, uh, uh, locating of our sewer lines and water lines. Uh, Lee approached me and was wanting to get paid a salary as opposed to, uh, an hourly wage. And I just wanted to bring that to the board for their consideration. Do we have a write-up in here?
Debbie, do you remember when we voted on that? Did we fire him for one year or am I mistaken? It wasn't in the minutes, but. I, I looked it back up, but I.
His resume says, what did he?
I think, I think it was in his resume that it said something about a year. He just thought it would get done in a year.
That's what I thought. Wasn't sure.
Is the only thing that he's asking for here is the benefits, not an increase?
He's asked for, I, I think he's talked to the mayor about the salary. He'd asked me about health insurance benefits and. Which if he's classified as permanent, then he would be entitled to help.
Is he working? Is he getting overtime right now consistently? Um, he's had, I think he had two and a half hours for the first period, an hour and a half. So if we put him on salary, is that going to eliminate the overtime? He's not gonna do it. What, what, is he asking for salary?
His resume says fifteen dollars an hour, right?
It did. That's what we're applying.
We also assume, I assume that if you work for the city for a year, you're entitled to benefits. You're hiring for a year to do the work longer if it, if it suited us. But, uh, he, he requested fifteen dollars and we agreed with it. And I would assume at that time that he would be a full-time employee, would be entitled to all benefits.
When I was reading the ordinances, didn't it say that he had to be employed for six months before he was eligible for benefits?
Not all benefits. That's vacation, short, and the sick leave. Um, health insurance is thirty days past the first of the month.
Okay.
So.
I would agree with that.
I assume, again, we're hiring to be a full-time employee, a real job for us that he assumed that he had done for one year. After one year, if we decide to terminate him, he's terminated. So he should be entitled to health benefits.
Do we need to make a motion or are we just working to clarify?
I, yeah, I just needed it clarified because I, I mean, when I'm in doubt, I pull the ordinance and I start reading it. So I just needed to clarify that he's a permanent full-time employee for insurance and.
I thought that was the intent when we, when we hired him to do the work. We sure didn't hire him to get the amount of overtime he wanted at his discretion. He was to work a forty-hour week for us and get jumped on. And the overtime was not a question or should not have been a question. We furnished him a vehicle because he actually needs one. He can't get around on a bicycle. It says here, and he's right, prohibits employees from taking vehicles home. I don't see how we, I don't, I don't see to make an exception there. I think the vehicle still should come back to City Hall if he can get there there. We will furnish a vehicle for anybody else to head back to work to work. No, we're gonna give you a chief's. So, I mean, I think that part of it, he doesn't entitled to the vehicle. He's entitled to be a full-time employee to all the benefits at the due time of all other employees. At six months before he gets his vacation. That's what he gets. Thirty days for the health insurance, that's normal. And no overtime because he's going to become a salaried employee. If that's a clarification, that, if anybody disagrees with what I assume to be clarification, I would speak now. If it's not, Debbie's verified on what she's asked. If it's not, Debbie's verified on what she's asked. We don't need a motion.
Does everyone here agree?
My only concern, and I've never practiced unemployment, but I think we need to make sure, if it can be tied up, that at the end of the year, he'd have files running.
If we wait long enough, he's looking for a job, he's entitled to a job.
If it's a if it's a one-year contract, I would want someone to look into it because I can't believe that if you have a specific one-year contract, that you're gonna be out there. Now, again, I don't, is your firm practicing that?
My understanding was that Lee was an independent contractor, not employee, so I...
Yeah, if he's getting benefits, he's not...
Well, if he's if he's had that contract, we gotta stand clear.
I'm a little bit concerned. I mean, that's my only concern about bringing in a lot of benefits is that...
We have to say it on the floor before we retire him. It don't happen very often. We have had one employee, I recall, that, you know, someone who had a job to offer her employment. I mean, she was an adult that worked down there, which isn't very often.
I didn't try.
Then your manager, but they usually have another job or something, but that they've gotten the benefits.
But if they are an independent contractor under the one-year contract, then I don't think...
Or seasonally. I mean, I didn't know what they're all attempting.
I have no, I have no interest in unemployment law. But the fairness of the issue would dictate that at the end of that year, we don't want to play a fair game. And whatever it takes to get to the end of, we need to do. I don't have a problem with the benefits. I don't have a problem with it. But at the end of the year, if they agree with you, you're gonna work for a year. I don't want any constitution in this statute or...
Fifty-two weeks to work for ninety-nine weeks of unemployment? I'll do that.
Seventy-two.
Ninety-nine is...
Seventy-two. They changed it. January. We brought it back down to ninety-nine, seventy-two.
You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but we've got, we're here with two options. Either he has, either we hired him with a one-year contract or we hired him to do the job with the understanding that if it took longer to get the job done, he'd give it to you. Was that not the way that we hired him? There you...
Yep, I think I did that through up like your family.
You know, there. It wasn't actually a contract.
We hired him, though, at fifteen dollars an hour.
Yes, right.
And there was never discussion about benefits. I mean, I would rather up his hourly wage and make it, make him an independent contractor, calculate what it's gonna cost him, up his wage and make it one-year independent contractor because I don't want any part of it. I mean, that's gonna cost this on every employee. Do we have it?
We do. Every employee. Sam has a pretty good turnover in his department. We had to pay unemployment to all the police officers when they're gone. Whether it's if Sam loses them or if they quit, we had to pay unemployment. And we assumed that we hired someone, and I thought that we hired Lee under the assumption that he...
Not when they quit, and ninety percent of them quit. If they quit, it's hard, it's still hard to find a quit employee.
Was he on a contract or was he just hired as a regular employee?
He was hired as a regular employee.
So there was no contract?
No.
Martha, does the ordinance define what temporary means by...
Yeah, it has permanent, it has full term. I mean, it gives a description of the permanent, part-time, and temporary.
Yeah.
We have a deposition for full-time, part-time, and temporary.
That's right.
I just wondered if there was something there under temporary.
Have you thought about the fact that doing this with an independent contractor would cost more than it would pay him for a year and unemployment for seventy-two weeks?
Temporary or employees who are hired to fill a temporary position, work on a periodic basis for as a seasonal employee.
I think we're gonna...
We're going to just go with it.
No, we're not, but I think so.
Is there a point in the statutes? I'm actually from Travis, first thing, Travis says we're not construction, we're just a survey.
We're gonna be eating this for the rest of our lives.
You know, I probably shouldn't say anything and I've sat here and listened to this and you know me, I probably always will. Number one, the equipment for this vital job that needs to be done so that people don't have to go around in the future and start digging up every street and everything around here, which is true, because there is no plan right now. No one knows where things are except Roger and it's all in his head. The equipment's offered free of charge. He said he came to the city and the way we understood it, some of us sitting back here who were at the meeting, even though it's not in the minutes, that the city hired him to do for this position. When you're hired, you usually negotiate a salary. I hired and fired several people over the years when I worked. And they became employees with benefits. I think you're beating this thing to death. I don't think someone of his caliber and in his position will sit around and suck out unemployment for years after the job is completed. I feel he'll go on to something else. Now, I've said that, so go with it where you want.
And it was my understanding based on me, too, he was hired as a city employee. We didn't discuss contracting with him. We didn't discuss contract price. We didn't discuss necessity of paying railing wage for a contract, etc., etc. I think he's an hourly employee. And the question was simply brought forward by Lee. I'd rather be salaried than hourly, reflecting the same amount of money. And then the administration had a question. Is he a seasonal employee or is he a regular full-time employee that should garner benefits? I think he's doing, I think he's beyond a seasonal employee. We are keeping him for a year or longer if necessary. So he's already done a little bit of work beyond just locating where the sewer and water is. He's done a little bit of work as a city employee to figure out what's going on with the sewer at the new park for the restrooms. I think he's might have been, was he contacted? Mike, to the best of your knowledge, about the local street project, with any...
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay. He might be a valuable asset here as well.
We already found three water lines we had running the same way.
We did? Oh, yeah. Is he a full-time, regular employee or a seasonal employee?
I think he's a full-time employee.
And I think that was the intent when we hired him. And I think when we hired him, we didn't discuss the, I guess, the tiki-tackiness of the cost. I think we discussed that we're getting a great value for something that we've been needing to do for forty years now. Am I correct in that assumption?
So we don't need any motions to change from fifteen dollars an hour to salary?
Well, unless we, unless we wanna give Lee salary, which is what he was asking for. And that's the reason we're here.
I really have one question about it. Is the reason to change from hourly salary to...
A salary, a lot of times, you...
That's all. Yeah. Okay. Is it just to avoid overtime? I mean, that would make...
Is this something we should be discussing in open session? This is the first mailman, and we've got a lot of folks out here. And I think I'll make the motion we table this to the next meeting and put it on the floor of session because I think we're all in violation of some...
I just, I mean, I don't think it's fair to you. Do we need to vote on that or can I just sit table?
You can. You're the mayor.
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. All right. New business, the police car. We have, Mr. Rishel had a wonderful idea. The police cars, we randomly park it around intersections to cause people to slow down. But we had to remove a lot of the equipment on it to supplement the new cars. So does it resemble a police car in any way, shape, or form?
It's still marked when you get the police officer.
Maybe we could put Mabel in it and sit it out somewhere and... If it's rolling, do we wanna sell it for scrap or what do we, what do we wanna do? I mean, if we move it to a number of locations. I mean, it's still operable, operable enough to move station to station. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is shot in. We have to keep starting all the time.
We could jump-start it. We could write unmarked car on it and that'll...
You know, if you take, when you talk about an excess police car, it's not much good, right? If you take that out there and park it up there someplace on Locust Street and these guys are working up there and leave the lights on occasionally, that'll give you more, more visibility or give a lot more safety there because when I worked up here...
We've taken the lights off for the new cars.
Well, I just suggest that if you have a car you're not using. Because when I worked up here, we got him talked into, about John Maddox talked into doing it, and it made it a lot safer for us guys working, especially on seventy-three highway at that time. With just a car sitting there lighting.
Well, and I guess the question is, do we, do we look for a purpose for it?
Or if you've got something, you just...
Yeah, or do we scrap it?
Scrap it? Realistically, how long is it gonna take someone to figure out that there's someone in that car?
Well, see what you do.
It won't take long.
You park it there three times and then they come along and say, here we go again, and there sits Sam.
I tell you what, it works. It worked. It worked then.
They'll figure it out.
It worked.
Figure out how to pay a fine.
We record it around and then such, the real office, the real intent.
I don't feel real strongly about it one way or the other. But I think it would be beneficial to, to use the decoy. That's my opinion. That's not real high on my list.
One way or the other. You know, we always talk to later. Gentlemen, what are, what are your preferences? Or do we, do we have a motion to... I don't know. Do you need a motion to do that?
Chief, what do you think we should do with it?
Well, it hasn't been cost-effective to keep it. We need to get rid of it. Whatever the pleasure of the work. We've pretty well jumped it down to nothing really.
Well, if you discuss a decoy in an open meeting and it gets in the paper, how many people do you think are actually gonna pay any attention to it? Come on, guys.
We'd be surprised the number of people that...
Don't read the paper.
That's right. And you change that decoy on occasionally.
Well, if you take the time to paint a head and a side window, it actually looks like somebody sitting in there.
Mr. Farrell, did you make a motion?
How many times, years ago, was that up there on Turnpike?
I would make a motion that we dispose of it.
Is there a second?
I'll say it, ma'am.
Call for the roll.
Larry.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Wayne.
No.
Christie.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
That motion passes. I guess the next question is, how do we dispose of it? Do we wanna...
Seal bids.
Seal bids. So be it. We'll publish that in the paper and...
Are we gonna go both of them? Chivalry and get the car?
Are we buying it? Are we buying it, Greg? Are we voting to do that? Is there a motion to dispose of the old fire chief's car by sealed bid?
Can he go with it?
Don't leave me with a good time, Larry.
All right, got my quote. Fire chief's car.
Is there a second?
I'll say it back.
I'll call for the roll for what?
Wayne.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Larry.
Jeff.
Is there a point, though, where what they give is not going to be... We can reject, we can reject bids. And for the record, I would like to point out, if we do sell the fire chief's car, it is not a fire sale.
We got it. We got it. It's gonna be funny.
Get married and buy a car. Liquor license renewals. We have a number of folks seeking renewal of liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve those? I'll make them. Is there a second?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just curiosity, why would we charge the MBS more than we would make a straight deal, real fee license?
Mr. Rishel made that motion. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Call for a roll.
Christie. Wayne.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Jim.
Larry.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
That motion passed. Moving on to our bids. We have a number of bids for concrete, heavy equipment and sidewalk, curving, guttering equipment. They are sealed. I'm gonna... We have two concrete bids, one from Ewing, one from Morgan's. We have a ground source system bid, Danny Cantrell's bid, Mike Cheeks' bid. We'll start with the ground source bid. You gotta remember Johnny Carson was...
Yes.
All right. Ground Source has a bid for heavy equipment. We have Mike Cheeks' bid for heavy equipment. Heavy equipment here for... Danny Cantrell, these are... So let me go over these heavy equipment bids. So let me go over these heavy equipment bids first. We have. Okay, from Ground Source, technically from Philip Hawkins. Tarex seven sixty B, Extend AHO. Mr. Cheeks, you know what that is?
Backhoe.
Okay. And there's a, there, he's got a Bobello SK two-ten LC excavator. Two-foot bucket, three-foot bucket, rock bucket, and two protection wheels. Letter here. Heavy equipment. Base equipment, the backhoe and the excavator. Equipment lease is for fifteen hundred dollars per week. The, the excavator is with the operator. Operator time for the excavator is built hourly. Equipment operator billing rate is fifty-two dollars per hour straight time, seventy-two dollars per hour overtime. The hydraulic hammer attachment for the excavator is fifty dollars per hour. The bid excludes fuel, oil, and filters. Close contact, if you have any questions. That's for an excavator and a backhoe. And that's the only bids we have for an excavator and backhoe. Are those both necessary to our project?
Yes.
Okay. We have another bid, this is Mike Cheeks' bid for a skid steer. And it's twelve hundred a month. Does that include fuel?
No.
And we have Danny Cantrell's bid. That's going to include a case skid loader, and is that basically what you're bidding on as well, Mr. Cheeks? So we had two.
Danny's got his with, because we'll need, he'll need one and I'll need one, about all time.
So we're going to need two of them?
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, so you guys aren't necessarily bidding against one another, we could approve both of them.
Right.
And that would be necessary to the project? He's also bidding concrete saws, laser guides, loaders, dividers, edgers, hammer drill, four hundred foot of twelve-inch rails, four hundred foot of six-inch rails, two hundred foot of four-inch rails. Okay. And his bid is at twenty-four ninety-three a week, with a twenty-six a week minimum. So that's six months for his equipment. And that's designation A. Verified designation A, that's with an operator, is that correct?
On Danny's?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Got two skid loaders?
Yeah.
One at twenty-four, and one at zero?
Well, one, one's at, Mr. Cheeks is at twelve hundred a month. And, yeah, the other's at twenty-four ninety-three a month, but that comes with concrete saws, laser guides, loaders, dividers, edgers, hammer drill, four hundred foot of twelve-inch rails, four hundred foot of six-inch drills.
That was an operator on Danny's?
Yeah.
That's with an operator on Danny's?
Yeah, and Danny comes with, Mike's already a city employee, and he's wanting to use, I'm assuming you're wanting to use your, your skid steer, but be compensated for the, the number of hours you put on it.
Right.
The other one was a week, not a month, didn't they, what you read?
Yeah.
How much are we?
Twenty-nine hundred.
But that's all, that's all his quit, those women from under.
A week? Did you say a week?
Yeah.
At twenty-three weeks, for twenty-three weeks?
Twenty, twenty-six.
Twenty-six? That's six.
Or you understand it, or you understand what all comes with this? Not just a skid loader, but all the concrete equipment, all the forms, everything, and.
It's all in the same bag.
Mr. Bid for skid loader or?
For all the, for all the equipment.
On, on Danny's, he comes with it on all his tools come with it.
Is that the standard for the end?
Let me ask you this question. Do you guys work for, do we pay you regardless?
It's online, on per month? On, on the month, I think, if will, because hours, what, what is, what is twelve hundred a month? In a hundred and twenty hours, ten dollars an hour? A hundred a week? Okay.
Well, the equipment's going to be used for the entirety of the project, regardless if they use it for sixty hours one week, and only twenty hours the next. Yeah. It, it, it'll fall in, because this is going to allow us to shut back a little bit.
Pottery equipment is twenty-eight hundred a month. Call pottery equipment, they'll, they'll, they'll rent you one for twenty-eight hundred a month.
It's on the job site, it's not going to be pull, I mean, you can't pull it off and take it someplace else if it's going to rain for three days here and take it someplace else. You're renting the equipment, folks.
If we're renting the equipment, are we responsible for it, or you?
I'm responsible for it, everything's.
Somebody steals it, it's yours.
Yeah, I still got insurance on it.
Somebody steals his equipment, it's his.
You like to ask him, but I do on mine.
And, and that'll be in the contract.
I think the contract reads that you still got insurance on it, you're on the insurance. No, because rental insurance is too expensive to come out here and for young stuff and buy rental insurance.
So, with this, we're getting one employee, basically. Is this going to be all the concrete forms for the job, or will we have to get more?
This, this will, this, this will cover the entirety of the project.
Okay, so then we don't have to worry about concrete forms?
Right.
Plus the equipment, so. So, I mean, if you just took off whatever Mike is going to charge us for his skid loader, we'd gain fifty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty for all forms and wages, basically for my employee.
Yes, but an employee who has an impeccable reputation doing this for the city of Lebanon.
Yeah, and I have no idea what forms cost or anything like that.
Does, does the board have any other?
Just a question, I think, to Jesse's point. And this, this timeframe is supposed to take to finish, it's twenty-six weeks, hopefully?
Well, we, we've budgeted the project for six months. What's the goal, is getting it done well in advance, and then we can move these gentlemen on to a different project.
By the way. So six months starting, I mean, or whatever. I think one of the issues you brought up is very viable, if you lose three or four weeks due to weather, that three or four weeks is going to be tacked on the end of the contract. So once you have a twenty-six week contract, you're going to have a thirty-nine, thirty-two, thirty-five week contract. That's it.
Well, but, we, we're not going to be pouring into, on this project, pouring concrete in December. And I, I think we're going to, we've already had a pretty dry summer, and I don't expect us to be shut down for a week at a time. And Mr. Cheeks would be the best person to, I mean, do you foresee the ability to, to get in there and put in forty hours a week every week?
Probably more than that, most of the time.
You recommend us doing this, I mean, you're running the job, so do you think this is good for the city, beneficial?
Equipment sounds real reasonable, Mr. Hawkins. I think that's really, really reasonable. Equipment's high dollar. Oh, yeah, I know. I don't see a problem with this.
Well, I think what we need to do is take each of these contracts one at a time. They are, they're, each of these bids, one at a time, there are three separate bids for three separate things, except for the skid steer that Mr. Cheeks is proposing. Mr. Cantrell is providing a skid steer, but Mr. Cheeks has stated that we're going to need more than one skid steer. And I, I certainly wouldn't want to send Mr. Cheeks into battle without.
Is this an area of king within your expertise?
Better be, we run checks when I'm talking to you.
Do you have an opinion?
As far as the Draco and the?
Standard, standard within the industry.
You know, Draco and the backhoe are pretty, pretty darn reasonable. So, I would, I would think that would be a very good deal for the city to do. The skid loader is a very reasonable thing as well. Three hundred dollars a week's pretty cheap for a skid loader. The, all the concrete equipment and the people that come with it and those type of things. If you, if you multiply it out and look at it as a cost to the project, is probably a pretty reasonable expense. It's less than if we had had a curb company come in separately and do it.
I, I would simply ask for motions, considering these three bids one at a time.
Well, I'll make a motion to blow them up, Danny Cantrell.
I second this bid.
I'll call for a roll.
Jess.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Jim. Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
That motion passes.
I'll make a motion to reject Philip Hawkins' bid.
I'll second it. James.
Hi.
Jim. Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Jess. Christie.
Hi.
That motion passes.
I'll make a motion to reject Mike Cheeks' bid.
Larry. Christie.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Jim. Wayne.
Hi.
That motion passes. All right, we have concrete bids. Have a bid. From Morgan's Concrete.
I think I'll. I don't think any of them, just walk around with them.
Apologies, we're passing bids real quick. They all were bidding one once, Kate, by all means, please. We had cake, we had a wedding reception last weekend, and I would have changed myself and not have enough cake for everyone. Sometimes I treat women, so I don't want to eat cake the rest of my after class, so please.
What kind is that? I decided I'm going to go hint trickies, did he make it?
No, it's from the street, just chocolate, peanut butter.
Hmm.
I took the chocolate. I'm like, get the, from work of this morning. And if I could hear from him, I'd like to ask you about like who you talk to, where you've been to and get information, whatever information you can get me, that'll start it going. Is that some wonderful idea?
Yeah. Nice, I love working here. I'm pretty much, it comes from like, we just talk to a lot of people that come from the city, like what chance that's working with the.
You don't want that dude getting there?
He's fired.
The boss part, the boss part, it's so lit.
Wanting another piece.
I called the number you called him from. Uh, tomorrow they're having a painting, uh, by the fact that the Alderman Center, they're gonna be there painting for us, we're gonna see that in tomorrow morning at nine. Oh, okay. Yeah. Get her early there, I said, if you wanna get a photo op for the Alderman Center. The ladies will be paying, I'll be seconded, yeah. I can't work. All right, have, have, have the Alderman had an opportunity to look over the bids? Does the Alderman have any questions about the bids?
Six bag mix, do you need this to compare to Morgan's?
I, I, I believe so, uh, Morgan's provided, uh, Morgan's provided, uh, different, different additions, microfibers and, uh, calcium. And stated hot water's not available. Ewing provided, uh, specifications of four inch slump, uh, four thousand PSI, uh, with, with a price plus, uh, hot water added. And it's up to the board to vote, uh, one, one company can provide hot water, one can't, I'm, I'm hoping to avoid hot water altogether. Not because I'm against hot water, anyone who may be bidding hot water, I'm just helping to wrap this project up before it starts to get cold and suscitate hot water. One, one thing I, I got to thinking of from a while back, can we approve both bids in order from both companies, uh, or do we have to pick one?
Mike, your construction manager, your construction manager, this job I want you. It's your responsibility to pour this concrete.
I'd rather pour it from one person.
Oh, was it?
All the concrete cut in one place, then we don't have no problems, if we, if we, I think every break, every truck, we should take a test on and if we wanna break it, we've got to test their break, if we see something wrong in the concrete, we can break it. And we know where it come from, we should date it, put the station on it and, uh, be able to, be able to go back on and say, hey, this concrete didn't break, come and fix it. Instead of us tearing it up and doing it ourselves.
As our engineer, what's your recommendations, one or two?
I'd recommend one.
How about which one that you have ahead of?
It don't make, it don't make any, no difference, long both of them will stand the test.
I guess the public knows, you wanna tell them what the bids are?
What are the amounts?
Sure, uh, uh, four thousand PSI, uh, poured at a four inch slump, uh, was bid at eighty-three twenty-five from Ewing. Hot water's an additional three twenty-five per yard, that same four thousand, uh, pounds, six bag mix is eighty-eight per yard, uh, for Morgan's. Three thousand pound, five pound bag is eight, four dollars per yard for Morgan's. And now, Mike, are we? What's the difference between three hundred pound and four thousand PSI?
Mm, probably a full bag of semen, I'd say, I'd say three thousand, five bag, thirty-five hundred, five and a half, that's what, what they got broke.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, per yard.
So, when, when, when Ewing's, uh, described as four thousand PSI poured at a four inch slump, that's the same as a four thousand pound six bag?
That's what we bid out, that's what we let bids forward.
Okay. Then Ewing's bidding eighty-three twenty-five, uh, for that, Morgan's is bidding eighty-eight.
Where does the microfiber come into this? Cause there's nothing said about microfiber on Ewing's.
But Mike, are we likely to need microfiber?
Prob, probably not.
Okay, what, what?
Unless we wanna put some in the sidewalks and, and that's whatever you wanna do.
And the calcium, one percent, two percent calcium?
We shouldn't need it, but I can tell you, if you add hot water to it, that's about the same as one percent calcium.
So calcium can be used in a little pot water?
Uh, not, and it won't work right.
Okay.
Because it'll take forever to start working. Calcium don't do you no good to your concrete, heat's up to a certain temperature, you know what that temperature is?
It, it's a chemical reaction, you know, and when you put the calcium in, it retards that reaction.
I took advanced chemistry in high school, but I got a C.
King, and your plans, did you estimate the number of yards of concrete that this project will have?
Um, we estimated, I think, at the linear foot of the, or we put in the linear foot of, uh, curb and gutter, we can get you yardage if you want.
Rough estimate of?
I, I don't off the top of my head, well.
Mike, did I?
Nah, I couldn't, no, I don't, I'm sure I don't.
Now, Ewing, do they, I mean, they've got the microfiber and all that, they just didn't fit on.
Because we didn't ask for bids on it, oh, I mean, when we sent the, sent it out, uh, on the, you know, from the, from the bid sheet, all it was, was the four thousand pound test, that's all, and hot water.
We had a lot of other stuff.
Yeah. But the fiber will be about the same as wherever you buy it at.
So we're looking at four dollars and seventy-five cent difference, um, the higher one is a local Dallas County business and the other is, is it Polk County? I mean, does that matter to, I mean, it kinda matters, I mean, I think, I think that it would be important to support local businesses. Um, Morgan, have you dealt with Morgan's concrete much?
Really.
Okay, I don't know what their reputation is at all. Which is better?
On the sidewalks, Michael, did you have anything to do, which one to pour the fathers?
No, I didn't know.
I don't know, we use both of them, I'm just curious.
I don't know.
Could you give an estimate within a hundred yards?
Well, you're gonna get about seventeen feet out of the curb, so there's what, forty, seventeen feet curb area.
It's a quarter of a mile to... That's gonna be about a little over a quarter of a. It's gonna be a quarter of a mile from local, a little over a quarter.
About the planes of my office.
You know the web wall, would that be helpful? I know.
I think it's like around forty-four hundred feet.
King, when you did this, what did you bid the concrete to be? Didn't you have figure?
We bid running foot curb and gutter. Yeah, what we did is a total for the concrete curb and gutter.
This, this concrete needs to be consistent. Or we can't make it work.
Have you had trouble with Ewing's?
No.
You're gonna have over eight thousand feet of curb and gutter. You're gonna have over eight thousand feet of curb and gutter, over four thousand feet of side yard. You're probably, you can add rough numbers, eighty thousand plus worth of concrete for curb and gutter. Probably seventy thousand or so for the sidewalk, so, concrete wise, you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more materials in this project.
That's dollars not based on?
How many yards is that?
Yeah, for the yards.
You keep trying to convert me to yards, Wayne, I can't convert you to yards.
Well, I think I had it, you said twelve thousand feet, did you see that?
Said you've got eight thousand feet of curb and gutter. As I get rid of that, I'll tell you.
I didn't think we had that.
Seven yards, okay. That's why I have a calculator, I am no accountant.
That's eighteen hundred and seventy yards, you say it's a thousand.
But that is for the curb, that's not sidewalk.
Well, what should I do is, is divide one bid by the percentage of the whole and add the percentage difference by what the total cost of concrete's gonna be.
Do you wanna tell me the answer?
I would have told there would be no math.
Morgan's got two trucks. Two all the way up here?
You know where Canable's council is?
You can't get no hot water.
If you got that cheat sheet on your desk.
Yes, you were correct, that's the difference.
There's a certain angle without.
Well, it's down.
Yeah.
Thousand yards, it was all the kind of.
That number's twice.
Four hundred and seventy-six.
It's a thousand yards for the curb and a thousand yards for the sidewalk, so it's two.